Well, thanks everybody for being here today. Appreciate you putting up with our technical challenges. I'm Jeff Kittner with the North Dallas Chamber of Commerce. Welcome to the City Council District 13 Candidate Forum. Normally, we'd be hosting this in person, but due to COVID-19, we've shifted to offering these forums virtually. Thanks for your patience as we hopefully avoid any more technical difficulties. As you know, early voting starts on May 24th, which is next Monday. Before we get started, I want to recognize all of our co-sponsors. The Dallas Breakfast Group, League of Women Voters, Friends of the Dallas Public Library, Faith Commons, and Preston Hollow People, and of course, the North Dallas Chamber of Commerce. Let me give you all a little bit of information about District 13. You've heard about this before at our previous forum, which I think many of you attended. District 13 is notable for having traditionally the highest voter turnout by percentage in the city. Well over 10% of the voting age population participating in municipal elections, compared to just about 6% citywide. In the general election back in May, 9,641 people voted in District 13, more than any other district. The individual vote totals for each of the candidates here today would have been enough to win in most of the other districts outright. And in fact, each of the two candidates today received more votes individually than all of the candidates combined in each of District 2, District 3, District 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. So it just tells you that District 13 is a highly engaged district and lots of voters out there. So the rules will be the same as our last candidate forum. We'll be using ballot order as the sequence and we'll alternate back and forth for the first response. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. Following the opening statement, we'll have a series of questions from me, hopefully some audience questions as well. And each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Audience members, if you have any questions, post it in the Q and A, send it to me privately. For a question to be asked, it must be to all of the candidates. And can y'all remind me who is first on the ballot for this election? Okay, so Ms. Donna L. Willis, you will start. You'll have two minutes and then Mr.
Actually, I think I'm first on the ballot. Just FYI, I'm fine. I'm fine if Gay wants to go first, but I am first on the runoff ballot.
Okay, let's, right, so yeah, I don't, yeah, we were using the previous ballot before and then why don't we? I wasn't sure of the results of the runoff ballot, so why don't we, so Mr. Burke, you'll go first.
Yes, it's alphabetical on the runoff ballot.
Yeah, so we'll do, we'll do alphabet.
Great, great.
Ms. Donna Willis, you'll respond to the first question and then Mr. Burke and we'll just alternate back and forth. So, Mr. Burke, you've got two minutes.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jeff, and I want to thank, I want to begin by thanking everyone at the North Dallas Chamber and all of the co-hosts of today's forum and everyone else who's joined in. For those of you who don't know me yet, I'm Leland Burke and I'm running for District 13. I've lived my entire life in the district. I've raised my three kids here. I've started my businesses here. And I've led my neighborhood crime patrol, my homeowners association, and I've served on numerous boards and commissions, including being appointed by Councilwoman Gates to two different city boards. I'm on the board at UT Southwestern Medical Center, Safer Dallas, Better Dallas, the Dallas Museum of Art, the Dallas Opera, and the Texas Business Hall of Fame. I've been a 10-year member and former board officer of the Oak Lawn Committee, which as many of you know, reviews zoning cases within PD 193, which is the Oak Lawn and Uptown Corridor. I have a deep understanding of land use and zoning regulations throughout our city. This is a critical background to have in a diverse district and a diverse city, especially as we work to promote viable, affordable housing solutions in Vicary Meadow and throughout our city. Just as important, I have 35 years of experience building successful businesses in Dallas. I've shepherded my own companies through challenging economic times. And as our city works to restore the local economy post-COVID, the city needs high-level budget and finance experience now more than ever. Among others, I've earned the endorsements from the Dallas Police Association, the Dallas Firefighters Association, the Real Estate Council, the Apartment Association of Greater Dallas, former District 13 Councilmember Ann Margolin, former Mayor Tom Leopard, and my former opponent in this race, Max Smith. So I'm going to end the opening remarks with that and thank you all again. I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Ms. Donna L. Willis, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting this again. I'm so proud to be a member of many of the organizations that are sponsoring this. But I am running for this seat to represent the residents of District 13 because I'm an experienced, effective leader. I have demonstrated how I build consensus in good times and in crisis. I am a proud three-time appointee of Councilmember Gates. She appointed me to the Vicary Meadow TIF Board where I got a firsthand look at how difficult it can be to accomplish getting affordable housing into the places that we need it most. I served as her appointee on the 2017 Bond Committee on the Critical Facilities Subcommittee that reviewed our police and fire stations, our arts facilities, and other city buildings. But as a member of that Subcommittee, I also was involved in the overall committee and looked at flood protection and storm drainage in our streets and alleys and the billions of dollars of need that we had that we couldn't address in a bond and that we shouldn't be addressing via a bond. Finally, she appointed me to the Community Development Commission. And this is the commission that makes recommendations to council on how to deploy $30 million in federal funding or HUD money to community development block grants and such. Professionally, I have been at a global ad firm. I worked on Fortune 50 brands where accountability and performance were part of their responsibilities and my responsibilities as an aspect of being publicly traded. By day now, I am president and CEO of the Turtle Creek Conservancy. It's a small business. I create a budget. I work with business leaders on my Board of Directors. I have P and L responsibilities. I need a payroll. I run a business in good times and bad. But the reason I'm involved in this race and I want to serve the residents of D13 is because of my neighborhood's first platform that will ensure that neighbors' voices are represented at City Hall. I'm proud to have the endorsement of the Dallas Morning News and I look forward to your questions and to your vote.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Donna L. Willis, you will start with the first question. It's about the city of Dallas and economic development. Dallas continues to be a vibrant economic city with major companies like Uber and Jacobs choosing to relocate here. While we have a great story, proactive economic development for the city sometimes gets overlooked in favor of what's best for the North Texas region. What specific policies would you recommend be implemented to generate proactive economic development for our city?
Well, I would say something that is absolutely fresh news is the discussion that was taking place at the council briefing just this morning about an economic development corporation or an LGC, a local government corporation. And I think that is something we very much need. This is something other large cities have. It puts a different kind of emphasis and focus on Dallas. It takes a look at our assets and what we have to offer across all sorts of business categories and industries and really elevates that and puts a focus on it that we very much need. So while there are times when we need to be part of a package to get some initial attention, there are things that we definitely have to offer that are unique to Dallas that we need to have a dedicated group of business leaders as well as staff in this LGC to be able to focus on. And that is something that's being discussed right now. It's got a timetable that is about to become active. I believe it's voted on next week. And I'm really ready to see us hit the ground running on that. I'd like to see a little bit more aggressive timetables on that. But I think we are moving the right direction there and bringing focus back to Dallas.
Thank you very much. Same question, Mr. Burke.
Thank you. So I have a slightly different perspective. I, you know, we see Dallas really, I look at Dallas as a, the Dallas region as a doughnut and I fear that we have become the hole in the doughnut. And so we've got to really get focused on how to keep these businesses. We hear about the, the large businesses moving into Collin County. We're missing that. We, there are small and medium-sized businesses that are continuing to move to Dallas. We're missing that. How do we get them here? We have to get focused. We have to promote better schools in Dallas. I was at lunch recently with a friend who has a new employee. The young man is engaged. He lives in Uptown. Where are they moving? They're buying a house in Frisco because they can't, they don't think they'll be able to afford private schools in Dallas. And they, they need to go where they can get more for their money. So if we can't keep young people in Dallas, Dallas is losing. And we've got to begin, begin competing with these suburbs. We've got to get our, our schools are improving. It's not happening fast enough. That is the main issue. Infrastructure is another huge issue. When companies are moving to Dallas and they want to build facilities, we have much bigger infrastructure problems in Dallas and that hits the bottom line. So I focus on balance sheet issues. What can we do to get these companies to remain in Dallas? It is a good idea and I will be asking the mayor to, to bring together the smartest business minds that we have in this community. And we need to go and visit other cities that are dealing with these problems and we need to take those very best ideas and bring them home to Dallas. But we've, we've got some big, big underlying issues that we have to start, we have to start fixing. And so infrastructure and schools are two big ones.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
To compete.
And we'll, we'll go, we have another economic development question and I am keeping a timer here. So if you see me come off mute, that means your time is, is up. So just instead of hearing a loud timer, if you see me come off mute, just a signal to wrap it up. So, Mr. Burke, you'll get this question first. Another one on economic development. The largest portion of our tax base, I think approximately 85%, is north of the Trinity River. If elected, what would you do to reduce the economic gap between northern Dallas and the southern sector?
Absolutely. And we have to, we have to get busy on this. I will not be advocating for economic incentive deals in the northern districts. I think that is a very poor use of our economic development dollars. I use an example of the $3 million that we, we wrote a check to Costco to open a big store at Coit and, and LBJ. They were going to open up that, that store regardless. We need to be taking our economic development dollars and we need to be, we need to follow the, the spirit of Mayor Rawlings' Grow South Initiative. I believe that rising tides lift all ships. Let's get Costco down in the southern part of Dallas. Let's get FedEx and UPS or whoever else would be a recipient. Guarantee that you will employ 200 people. And if you don't, you've got the balance sheet to return the money. North Dallas is doing great. We're very lucky to be in North Dallas. But I, we've got to begin building the tax base, tax base in other parts of Dallas. And that, that is where we need to be exclusively using those economic development dollars. No more tax deals in North Dallas. When we give a tax abatement, those are tax dollars that we're not collecting. So I will not be rubber stamping deals like that on City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Ms. Donna L.
Thank you.
Same question.
So the question was about growing our tax base south of I-30 where only 15% of it is currently represented. And so that represents great opportunity. But literally 45 minutes ago on the call, Dr. Eric Johnson, our Office of Economic Development Director, was pointing out some of the pitfalls that could go along with that. So I think there's a lot of heart for growing our tax base there and it's, it's critical that we bring that inclusive opportunity. But there are also some issues around infrastructure. So you may want someone to relocate there. But, you know, if they're having to bear all of the burden of some of the infrastructure that the city may need to provide, that could be a stop sign. And so we really need to be thinking in terms of what the city is going to take a look at and bring to the table as well as what we might expect a corporate reload to bring to the table. But it's very attractive. We've got University of North Texas Dallas there. He was referencing some companies in China that were wanting to locate in the US and were really interested in the fact that there was a university and an opportunity to train their workforce in partnership by locating there and being able to draw from that. And so there are examples like that that just are really inspiring to me to make me feel like this can really happen. I want to go back to a point about creating, drawing together business leaders. That's already part of this plan that was discussed this morning. There would be a task force advisory of business leaders. Councilmember Mendelson pointed out that they should represent each district. And, you know, there's a lot of promise in that so that this is really, even though the focus may be on Southern Dallas, that this would be a community-wide effort to recognize this and to really make it happen. So I think we're really poised for something good to happen there.
Thank you very much. All right, next question, and this will be for you, Ms. Donna L. Willis, to start is on public safety. You both have said that you support Dallas Police and Fire and the budgets. What are the biggest public safety issues in your district and how will you address them?
Well, you know, the, the police chief just released a plan on how to combat violent crime. And so even though we do not have as much murder and assault going on in District 13, when that happens anywhere in our city, it is very unsettling. And so I don't think we can take the eye off of that ball just because it doesn't take place in our particular footprint. But what I hear most of all is the violation, I mean, what I'm hearing from our neighbors is the violation of, you know, your, your motor vehicle burglaries or breaking into them. And then of course, one really concerning thing is the street racing and the intersection takeovers because these are happening in neighborhoods. This happened right in front of St. Mark's. It is happening at Preston Road and Northwest Highway. So I was a big proponent of House Bill 2315 that John Turner and Morgan Meyer came together on that is moving through. It involves civil asset forfeiture, which we do not take lightly or grant that lightly. But if we need our police who have asked for the teeth to be able to enforce this by impounding a vehicle that is involved in this sort of thing, that takes it off the street, that begins to restore peace immediately. So I would say that's a big concern. It makes noise. It's scaring children and it's causing damage. A woman was killed a month ago because of errant gunfire from this sort of situation. So I would say that's a big deal and I am very pleased that the chief is being aggressive on it and that we're being aggressive on it in Austin.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Burke.
Yeah, so as president of my own patrol association, I work with our officers all the time. I've never, you know, in the past several years, our complaints about crime, really brazen acts of crime in our neighborhoods here in District 13 are on the way up. I do support the new police chief fully. It appears that the majority of our crime is happening in about 5% of the city. And that's not in District 13, but it is a citywide issue and we have to be focused on it. I do support the new chief and his hotspot tactics. That's what's happening. It's worked in other cities. It's going to work here. And we read today that they're thinking about to, to deal with the street racing, installing speed bumps in certain locations, which we'll see how that helps. It, it's probably going to be very effective. So we need to be using all of the tools in the toolbox. And of course, legislation in Austin is very important to deal with these people. And we need to untie the police. We need to untie their arms and let them, let them do what they need to be doing to protect our citizens and our neighborhoods. So I fully support the police and, in this effort. And it is the number one issue in our city is public safety. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Okay, now onto one of my favorite topics, parks, trails, and libraries and cultural affairs. And Mr. Burke, you'll be responding first. This is, these are the departments that Councilmember Lee Kleidman often refers to as the Ministry of Happiness. These are citizen-facing departments whose budgets unfortunately are often the first to get cut during the budgeting process. How will you balance the needs of these important city services, particularly compared to other needs like public safety? And Mr. Burke, you'll respond first.
Well, this is about priority and of course, quality of life is one of the biggest issues that we have. And I saw you, Jeff and Lee, and the event last Saturday was just wonderful at the groundbreaking of the new bridge over 75. And that was so well-attended and it was just such an amazing new asset for our, for our entire city. Not in District 13, but of course, the trail runs through our districts. And so yes, we've got to, we've got to get focused on waste in the budget. And there's a lot of it. We have a 600-page budget. We've got to, we've got to begin that process of really focusing. I bring 35 years of budget and finance background. I chaired the credit committee of my own bank. I know good deals when I see it and I know bad deals. And so there is a tremendous amount of waste and we've, we're going to have to get focused on that. There are areas that will be cut when we hit hard times. And thank goodness for the federal government funds that we got, which, which would have been a disaster without them in this budget cycle. But I think quality of life is one of the number one issues. And we've got to support our parks and our, our trails and our libraries. And that, that is a high priority, you know, right behind public safety. So I will always be supporting and I appreciate all of the work that you did and, and Lee Kleidman and everybody else that was involved in making that happen. I know it took a long time, but we will always support. I will always advocate for quality of life. That's what makes our city. So, thank you.
Ms. Donna L. Willis, same question.
Well, sure. Since I'm president and CEO of the Turtle Creek Conservancy that oversees 20 acres of parkland and about 1,600 trees every day, I'm going to assume it's a given that I care about park space and green space in the city. But I've also been a member of the Friends of the Dallas Public Library Board and been on the other side of the coin in fighting for materials and restored hours to our libraries. I think it's important to, though Councilman Kleidman calls this a ministry of happiness and we tend to sometimes consider it fluff in a city budget, it is absolutely not that because there are huge economic development implications in how we budget in our arts and our libraries and our parks. Arts represents, I think, something like 33,000 jobs in our community. It generates revenue. It's a tourism draw. And so we have to really think about that. Before you get out that scalpel and start paring down the budget, you have to think about what's the implication? This isn't just someone singing at the AT&amp;T pack. This is all the people who support that program, that performance, who buy tickets to that performance and who may travel in, stay in our hotels, generate hot tax for us. And when you look at libraries, this is a...
I think I accidentally unmuted you instead of unmuting myself. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, well, I get the message.
10 or 15 extra seconds to finish up. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Well, libraries can be a source of ESL and getting your GED and job search and internet connection for doing homework or finding a job. And in a city that talks a lot about workforce development, you can't discount libraries and their role in workforce development. So I think we've got to look hard and think about the happy part, but also think about the wallet part for the city.
Thanks very much. Okay, Ms. Donna L. Willis, you respond to this question first. It's about short-term rentals. Short-term rentals has been a hot topic of late. It's something that creates both cultural and economic value for entrepreneurs and small businesses throughout the city. But there's also been a push to regulate these further. What is your position on the passage of any regulations or ordinances that might restrict the operation of short-term rentals in the city?
Well, let me tell you, I'm sitting at my home and two blocks from me, I've got an example of both sides of this. Somebody who needs to be able to rent out a room in her house to help augment her own personal business, as well as someone who had a party house move in next door. So I have gotten it from both sides. What I'm pleased to see is that the, the short-term rental alliance is working toward policing their own better. I think about a third of these rentals are registered. And what that means to you and me is that two-thirds aren't. That means we are not getting the hot tax from them that we should be getting. This tax helps us pay for repairs at our arts facility, so it doesn't have to go into a bond program. But we don't want our neighborhoods disrupted with a party house next door. So we do need to have these regulations and they do need to police themselves. But we also need to put teeth in by making it part of the VRBO and Airbnb platform where those taxes are collected and people are registering their properties so that the city can get out of this what we're supposed to. And should we have an issue, we know exactly who we can go to. This is why you need to put me in office because I understand both sides of this equation. And I very much believe in putting the teeth in there because it generates revenue that we need to fund our basic services for our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Burke.
Sure. So I sat on the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission for seven years as an appointee of Councilmember Gates. And we used to talk about that hot tax almost at every meeting. The, the, the fact that about two-thirds of these short-term rentals are not registered and paying taxes does hit us pretty hard when they're not, when these folks aren't staying in hotels. But I've been walking our neighborhoods. It comes up. Nobody wants a party house next door. So we've got to, we've got to clamp down. We cannot permit these platforms to let this happen. If they don't do it, we need to do it. Nobody, nobody deserves that in their neighborhood and it's unacceptable. There are, you know, do we need to take a, an axe to it? Probably not. But we do need to get focused on how we get these folks registered so we can track them. And when there is a violation, we, we, we come down pretty hard on them. I have, again, felt, I have never been really comfortable with the idea of a short-term rental for profit in a neighborhood. So we need to figure out what, what that looks like. Does it have to be a 30-day rental? Probably so. Probably so because that covers the folks who need the income and it protects the neighbors who don't want short-term rentals and party houses in their neighborhood. So that, that is a big issue. Everyone's talking about it in these neighborhoods and it's something that we need to get a resolution to relatively quickly.
Thank you very much. Mr. Burke, you'll get the next question. And it's, there's a question in the chat which relates to what I'm about to ask. I'll try to incorporate that in as well. But the city does not have direct oversight over DISD, the Dallas Independent School District, but a collaborative relationship between the city and DISD is important. What's your view as the city's role relative to DISD and education in Dallas? And there's a related question, I think it's from Lisa Meyer, who has indicated that the mayor and at least four sitting council member are DISD parents. And talk about another time in the recent history in which so many leaders are personally invested in our schools and how you might approach the same thing.
Well, absolutely. I mean, there's nothing more important than supporting our, our public schools in Dallas. I mean, this is, as I mentioned earlier, it's, it's having an enormous economic impact on our city. So we've got to improve these schools, although we technically have no control at the Dallas City Council. We can use the bully pulpit and do everything we can to support our DISD trustees and their activities and their goals of improving education in Dallas. I can't think of anything that's more important than that. It's right up there with public safety, educating our young people and putting them on a, a course for, for the rest of their lives. And it also affects, you know, as I said earlier, the, the economics of our city. I mean, people coming to Dallas, they either hear that we have wonderful schools and we're educating our kids. And if we, if we don't have that, they're going to be going north. And we are, you know, that's been an enormous issue and it's cost us a lot of money. We've got to, we've got to continue to promote our schools, build our schools. A lot of controversy in the district right now over at Walnut Hill Elementary and the schools that were taken out by the, by the tornado. But that needs to, that needs to move forward quickly and, and we've got to, we've got to support our schools any way we can.
Thank you very much. Ms. Donna L. Willis, same question.
Well, if you want to see what Dallas is going to look like in 10 or 15 years, take a look at our DISD school system. That's our farm team for what our future is going to become, 154,000 kids. So I'm very proud to have the endorsement, I believe, of four or five DISD trustees. Miguel Solis is a former trustee. And we've got to work together and I think that we're seeing that happen. It's critical that we work with our DISD trustees who, let me just say, they work tirelessly and do a great job. They've added over 100 choice schools into our system that address everything from early college to vocational learning around aviation, construction, culinary. Amazing opportunities for students to choose now. I'm a DISD mom. My son is going to graduate in less than a month now and he's an early college kid. So he will have his associate degree as well as a high school diploma. Imagine how this can lift up our community workforce-wise and help create a community of sustainable, self-sufficient population that can be great consumers and really have a wonderful quality of life because they're doing everything that we're, we're setting out to do in our community by giving people greater incomes and greater education and greater opportunity. I do think it's the future of our workforce, so we need to maintain these relationships where we see workforce needs. We have to work with the DISD so that we begin to program the schools to address those. So very much a proponent of working like this.
Thank you very much. And you also get the next question. And talk about some projects that you've worked on for or with the city of which you are particularly proud of. Something you can point to where you feel like... Something you can point to where you feel like you've made the city a better place for citizens.
Well, I would point to uh my, uh as president and CEO of the Turtle Creek Conservancy, uh I was part of an effort to link another wonderful amenity in our community, the Katy Trail, to the park, to Turtle Creek Park. Um we are in an area that is very dense. We've got a lot of high rises. So we've got three times the amount of people who use a normal city park. So bringing the thirty-three thousand unique walkers on the Katy Trail into the park was a great way to share space and have people kind of extend uh nature. When they're out for a walk, they can come into parkland. People in parkland can use the trail. But the most important part was there were bond funds identified, uh but they, they didn't really get the job done. And so we were able to raise private funding to be able to execute that. Uh if, if we weren't able to do that, our nonprofit wasn't able to do that, we would not, uh we'd still be looking at that project. It wouldn't be happening. And so I think that this was a good lesson to be able to show others that in some cases, bond funds can drive a project. But in other cases, if it's just not happening, there may be some nonprofits or other citizens that you can activate. And uh I'm always happy to visit with people about how we made that happen because it just continues to add these linkages and amenities to our city for all to enjoy.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, same question.
Yes, well, uh in my seven years on the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission, one of the great things we did was the work we did to come up with the new cultural plan in the city of Dallas. And it had been um probably over a decade um since we had updated the plan. And it was an enormous undertaking uh led by um Jennifer Scripps, who just did a tremendous job. And uh really, it was about fairness and where our tax dollars go in our arts community through our public funding of the arts. And so it, it was really an amazing uh experience to see. Uh and we had meetings all over the city, in every district, multiple meetings. Public came out and gave us their ideas on how these, these very important dollars are spent, but done in a fair way so that all communities are represented in our arts. Um I, I was also uh appointed by Councilwoman Gates to the Northwest Highway and Preston Road Area Plan Task Force. And we worked for two years to come up with a vision plan for that very important area of Dallas. And it was um, all of the neighbors were involved, uh the neighboring communities. We, we had unanimous support from the City Plan Commission and it ultimately went to council for unanimous support. So we worked for about two years on that plan for that critical area of Dallas and it's a great plan uh that was widely adopted and uh very proud of the work we did there.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Burke, you'll get this next question first. Although improving, Dallas has a reputation as a city which is not always pedestrian and bicycle-friendly or is too focused on prioritizing car mobility and infrastructure. What would you do to support increased and safe mobility for pedestrians and bicyclists?
Sure. Well, we need wider sidewalks for one and I, and, and the, the plan is to begin locating uh housing near our transportation centers. So that's very important. If you can, if you can um get on your bike and you're within ten minutes from a dart station and, and you can, you can arrive at the, even in the middle of the summer, it's gonna be very hot. But they're talking about shower facilities where you can literally leave your bike safely, shower, go to work, come back. Your bike is still there. That's very important and it's, it's a great way to think about the future. Locating uh multifamily near um these important transportation locations. You know, um I think that's the future. And um if uh, I think that, that, I'm trying to think if I've, if I've touched on the um the elements of your question, but uh transportation and making the city uh less car-centric. Of course, it's a, it's an environmental issue. And as the city grows, we, we really need to be thinking in terms of how do we have fewer and fewer automobiles um and, and instead of more. So, you know, with electric cars, that's gonna be a very positive thing. But I think the key is to locate housing near transportation centers so people can get to um not just work, but quality of life amenities that we have in the city without using their car.
Thank you. Ms. Donna Willis, same question.
Sure. So there are a couple of ways to look at this and broadly, the city is reviewing, um I mean, we've got a strategic mobility plan. Uh it involved a lot of our citizens' input. They want to be able to have multimodal options, uh whether it is a a bike or a scooter or um, you know, walking or running or trails, et cetera. And so we're making progress in this area with the Circuit Loop Conservancy that was um uh money from the bond program to help tie all of our trails together so that on a bike, you can actually go farther into more of our amenities. But sometimes it boils down to something as simple as in the neighborhood where um some uh neighbors in Melcher talked about their street was repaved, but a crosswalk was not added back in. There had been one and it was paved over and never restored. And so that, that actually created problems with them crossing the streets with their, their kids. So we have a lot of good centers uh and things to do. Uh and we have opportunity for more development, for um smart development, for some other um retail centers to develop. And I would say that as those things occur, we must add in, not as an afterthought, but have part of the plan be about where do you park a bike? How do you have a family cross the street here to be able to enjoy this ice cream shop or go to this burger place? Uh so it's, it can be about uh bike lanes and uh bigger issues along that line, which we are working on factoring in as we are able to infrastructurally. But sometimes it comes right down to the neighborhood and just thinking in simple terms about uh, you know, getting out on your own two feet and walking and seeing how easy that is to do, especially with little ones in tow, to be able to enjoy some of what we offer. So I think we have to look at it at both levels, but definitely enact it.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Donna Willis, you'll get this question. I think this will be the last one-minute question you get from me. And then I wanna get a couple of audience questions and then, of course, we'll have our lightning round like we did last time. So um obviously, we're in the legislative session right now. Uh talk about some of the advantages or disadvantages of bills that are being passed uh or considered in the legislative session right now, uh and particularly on those that might preempt local city council decisions.
Well, I think um in terms of this, there, there are several that, that, that would, would do that. And so I've been tracking some things wa, going through. It's just, it's really unsettling to me when uh there is intervention at the state level on things that clearly need to be our, our decision. Uh I think our citizenry is perfectly capable of thinking about what fits our community standards. And so having anything dictated to us uh is really not appropriate. Um I do go back to um, you know, looking at something like the House bill that would affect our, our street racing and giving our police teeth. I mean, that's an example of something that um we should be doing in Austin that would give us a way to solve a public safety crisis, not getting into our policies and procedures of how we want to operate on our own community, uh against our own community standards. So um I'm really hesitant about any of that state intervention into our, our local policy.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, same question.
Yeah, that is something Gay and I can agree on. Uh we, we don't need uh more government um uh out of Austin. We need less unless it comes to helping us with public safety and how to deal with crime. But intervention on, on, in other areas need to be left. Uh we, we need less of that. We need to be left to, to make our own decisions for our own community. And um I will, I will work hard against state intervention um at uh, at, in our city.
Thank you very much. All right, we've got a question from Aaron Jaeger from UT Southwestern. Uh she's a resident of District Thirteen. She's concerned about the rising home costs in the district and that middle-class families are being priced out of the neighborhood and would like to know how you all would address that. Uh Mr. Burke, you'll go first.
Sure. Well, you know, uh that, that's a huge issue. Um I, interestingly enough, I have a someone who's supporting me in this campaign that lives on Walnut Hill Lane. And they um, in one of the smaller cottages right on, on the front. And he called me and he said, I've gotten such an enormous offer for my home. We're gonna sell it. And I said, well, where are you gonna go? You've gotta replace it. And he said, well, we haven't started thinking about that yet. But um uh taxes are, you know, we've all gotten our, our tax bill. Uh it, it, we've gotta, we've gotta hold the line on taxes and I will be laser-focused on that. Uh there's nothing we can do about what the appraisal district is doing. You go down there and you make your case. And if you, if you can't uh get them to agree, you have, you have recourse afforded by the state. Um a lot of people don't necessarily have the resources to go and, and fight uh that kind of a fight. But what we can do is help them at the horseshoe. And we need to be arguing uh strongly to reduce the tax rate. Uh we don't have a revenue problem in Dallas. We have a spending problem. So we've got to, we've got to be laser-focused on that and make, make sure that we, 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 we stick with the priorities. Um again, the market speaks for itself. We can't control values, but we can sure, we can sure control the tax rate and it's too high.
Thank you. Ms. Donna Willis, same question.
Well, I might differ a little bit there because I think we, we do have a, a revenue issue. And when we're talking about this housing issue, it sounds like this is someone who's at the younger end of the spectrum. So let me just address the sixty-five-plus crowd. I do believe in capping those rates so that people are not taxed out of their homes as property values and their, their housing value increases. But we need more housing stock and we've got a big problem in our permitting process. And so when that happens, we lose the enterprise of permitting fees. We have a backlog. We have frustrated developers who are going out to the suburbs to do business. And then we also aren't getting our projects off the ground and this includes residential. And so when you have the, I mean, it's a marketplace dynamic. As soon as you have a limited availability of housing, that's gonna drive up uh housing prices. And so we need to be able to generate revenue from those permits and from uh getting these properties on the tax rolls. Now, there's talk about uh because it's been so backlogged, outsourcing the residential side so we can focus on the commercial side. Uh I hate to have to do that, but if that's what's gonna solve the problem, well then, okay, let's do that. But we really need to grow our tax base. And this is what goes back to what I addressed early on in this conversation um about looking south of I-30, working with our Economic Development Group to decide what infrastructure we've gotta have for the right kind of businesses to grow our tax base. So we're not talking about raising taxes so that we're unclogging our permitting process, so that we're getting the housing stock we need so that you don't have to look elsewhere, so that you can still live in Dallas and enjoy what, everything there is to enjoy about being a Dallasite. So um
Thank you. All right, we've got another audience question from uh one of our co-sponsors, Nancy Caston with Faith Commons. Uh recently, there's been a high level of evictions in the Vicry Meadow area of this district. If elected, how would you address uh these evictions and the underlying causes there? And Ms. Donna Willis, you'll go first.
Well, first of all, this has been an issue across the city. There are rights of tenants that really aren't being respected by landlords or the courts. And thank goodness, we've got uh a group of attorneys, uh Mark Melton is leading, uh who are giving their pro bono services to help address this. But you know, landlords have rights, tenants have rights. And so um there are a lot of resources in the community to address rental assistance. So that helps the tenants stay in place and not be evicted. That helps the landlord get paid and meet their obligation. This also affects our schools. If kids are evicted in Vicry Meadow, um you know, that's gonna take the census countdown. And we've got the beautiful new Jill Stone Elementary about to open. But I'm not gonna wait till I'm elected. I have been sending out, this is Swahili. Um this is rental assistance notifications that I've been blasting out this morning um in eight different languages because the audience in Vicry Meadow are, is traumatized and terrified. They don't know even how to use the new library that we've constructed there. There's a new community court there, great centers for the community to be able to be educated on rental assistance that will help keep them in place, get their landlord paid, keep their student in the same school. Um and it, part of it is just going back to such a basic of communication and that's something I believe in. I've been involved in Vicry Meadow since uh the late nineties in volunteer capacities, Vicry Meadow Tiff Board. I've got a PTA meeting this afternoon at my son's high school at three-thirty. So that's not something I will pick up uh when elected. That's something I've been doing for years and will continue to do.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, same question.
Yeah, we saw some good news uh yesterday and in today's paper uh with the uh approximately five-hundred-and-fifty housing vouchers uh that will, that will uh assist folks like this. Uh and yes, we have, uh it's a big problem over there. We have uh, we have tenant rights, we have landlord rights. And we have to, we have to find the balance to, to help these folks. Uh but we also have to understand that the landlords um have to meet their obligations as well. And meeting financial obligations is, is an enormous issue uh when, when uh you have uh these kinds of uh uh tenant issues that arise. COVID uh, COVID created a, a terrible, terrible situation for folks like this. So the um uh the moratorium on evictions uh was very important at that time. But we have to be sensitive as well to uh what happens to uh the property owner when um when uh they're not collecting their rents. So these assistance programs become very, very important. And we have to educate the community over there on how to take advantage of them and um, and, and get these people on a solid footing with stable housing in that area. So it's, it's a big problem and um one of the big problems that we face and um as someone who uh has a uh fairly significant background in um real estate investment and um these issues, I, I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and working with the property owners over there and, and, and the folks who, who need rental assistance on, on how to, how to make these uh folks come together and protect the, the, the housing for uh these uh these communities that are, that are at risk.
Thank you. Uh I know I said we're gonna go to lightning round next, but I've got another good audience question that I'd like to ask, which is about cooperation around the horseshoe. And how, uh how will you commit to contributing to positive dialogue if you're elected to the city council? Uh Mr. Burke, you'll go first on that one.
Sure. You know, I've been talking about an experience that I had um probably right before COVID. I was at a um, an event and a member of the council came up to me and at, who I didn't know, but I knew who he was and he said, come, I want you to come down to my district. I wanna show you my district and get some of your thoughts and ideas. And we spent two hours in the car driving south of Fair Park um and west of Fair Park. And it was very eye-opening for me. And when you spend two and a half hours with someone in their car, learning about their district, I think that's fantastic. That's one of the first things I'm going to be doing when I'm elected. I'm gonna be reaching out to all of my fellow coun, council members. And I want to see your district and I wanna know what makes you tick and what your issues and concerns are. Because then I, I want you to come do that with me in District Thirteen. This is how you begin building a coalition. And we won't agree on everything, but we can sure, we can sure find the areas that we do agree on and start building from there. I, that's how I built my businesses over thirty-five years, is building a coalition and building friendships so that when the, the tough moment arises, hopefully the relationship will, will help the, the pendulum swing your way. So I think that's very important.
Thank you very much. Uh Ms. Donna Willis, same question.
Yeah, well, you have to be able to build consensus and have, have good relationships. Even if you disagree, you need to be able to have respectful discourse. I'm pleased to say, I, I think I've got a relationship with virtually every council member uh that's sitting today. And so I would walk in with those relationships and that respect in place. But I think that you have to be um, have, have the right temperament to be able to do that, to command that kind of respect and to be a good listener. And I'm pleased to say that the most recent commission that I served on, the Community Development Commission, I've got the support of a number of those commissioners who thought I added value and um to, to the, the commission of what we accomplished. Uh my opponents, uh on his most recent commission, a number of those people are supporting me because they felt like problems were brought forward, but not solutions. That really, it was the antidote to consensus building. Uh abrasiveness. I mean, that, that's not gonna get us anywhere at the horseshoe. It's been a contentious couple of years. Uh we've had relationships that could be better at the horseshoe. We need someone who's going to come in and show that demonstrated leadership and that kind of support uh to, to make things move forward, to lay down arms and just get to business on, on, on what we need to happen with, with the city of Dallas. And that's me. I've showed it time and time again and enjoy a lot of support from people I have worked with, haven't always agreed with, but we come away with respect. And so if you vote for me, that is what you're going to get at the horseshoe representing you in District Thirteen.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for the fun part. Uh if you will remember from the last time we did this forum, we had a lightning round. These questions, you only have ten seconds to answer, so These questions, you only have 10 seconds to answer. So do not take any longer than 10 seconds. We'll go back and forth. I've got a few of these and we'll start with Ms. Donnell Willis. What is your favorite street in District 13?
I love Mill Run Road. That's my, that's my street and I love it.
Mr. Burke, favorite street in District 13?
Ah, wow, favorite street. I mean, I'm on the streets all the time. My favorite street. I guess right now it's Forest Lane.
Okay, great. Mr. Burke, start with this one. What is the, since we're, got the Friends of Dallas Public Library co-hosting, I'm going to ask a library question. What's the last item you checked out from the Dallas Public Library and what branch did you check it out from?
Gosh, it would have been over at the, well, let me just say this. The last branch that I visited was the Bachman Lake Branch to tour the facility. It wasn't, I didn't check anything out. So it would have to be back when, probably the last library I checked anything out would have been Preston Royal.
And Ms. Donnell Willis, same question. What item is, the last item you checked out and what branch did you check it out from?
I, the titles would be things that my children liked because we check out books from Preston Royal Library. But I was very happy to be at the opening of the new Vicry Park Library and cannot wait to go check a book out there.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Donnell Willis, you're first. How many parks or recreation centers have you visited in District 13?
Well, we've got two rec centers in 13. So we've got Marcus and Walnut Hill and I've been to both of those. In fact, I went, I pulverated at Marcus and Walnut Hill. And what was the other question?
Parks. How many parks and rec centers have you been to in the district?
Oh gosh, I mean, we go to Crestline Park over by us all the time and, and Preston Hollow Park mostly. But Peter Pan is another one that I, I like. It's pretty.
And Mr. Burke, same question.
I've been to both of the rec centers often. We, we, we go to, it's really great. I grew up playing tennis at Preston Hollow Park. And so it was great when I had my kids there, but we were there all the time. I, when the weather's great, I, I could often be seen there having lunch with family members.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Burke, you'll respond first. Your favorite coffee shop in District 13?
Wow, favorite coffee shop. That's easy. New House Cafe, Preston Royal.
Great choice. Ms. Donnell Willis?
I could not get back to White Rock Coffee fast enough. They suffered in the tornado and as soon as I saw that open sign, I was there. And anytime I needed to meet with someone in the district, I made sure we were meeting at White Rock Coffee.
Another great choice. Two of my favorite places. In fact, I was at White Rock Coffee this morning. All right, Ms. Donnell Willis, you'll start first. Setting aside what you will do if elected, do you think city council positions should be full-time or part-time? And do you think the salary is the right salary?
Uh, well, I, I think it is a full-time job. Whether we say it's full-time or part-time, it's a full-time job. You know, it's, it's a sacrifice. For sure, it's a sacrifice. It would be a sacrifice I would make in resigning my role as president of the conservancy. So I think that's something the council will have to examine because there are 14 districts. So that would need to be something that I would hear from fellow council members on.
And same question, Mr. Burke.
It's absolutely a full-time job. There's no question about it. And I'm fine with the salary level. I, I wouldn't be advocating for any, any, any increase in, in salary to council members.
Thank you very much. Earlier this week, the Chamber hosted a program with Office of Arts and Cultures, Jennifer Scripps, who's the director there. So I'm going to ask an arts question. Mr. Burke, what's your favorite arts or cultural facility and culture facility in the city? Not necessarily in D-13, in the whole city.
Oh, wow. Well, in the whole city. I have to say, because of some just family history and clearly, yes, for me, it would have to be the, the Meyerson Center and the Dallas Symphony.
Thank you. Ms. Donnell Willis, same question.
Well, every day I see the beautiful Kalida Humphreys Theater. It's our baby Guggenheim. I love the architecture of it and all that it can become. It's a Frank Lloyd Wright-designed theater and it's a very unique theater experience. I've taken my children to performances there. And it's got a special place in my heart.
All right, thank you. Ms. Donnell Willis, you'll respond first. When is the last time that you biked on a city trail?
I walk on city trails, Jeff. I don't bike on trails. So I would say last week I was up on the Katy Trail. So.
All right, I'll, I'll expand it to biking or walking.
You ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Well, so I, I was, used to be a big biker at White Rock Lake and other areas around, around Dallas. It's been, it's been several years. I had a, major neck surgery several years ago and it makes it very hard for me to bike now. So, but it, it was, I really missed it and loved, you know, just loved it being outdoors. And White Rock is just such a wonderful asset in, in Dallas.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Burke, next question for you. Who's the most famous person to come out of District 13?
Wow, the most famous person to come out of District 13? The most famous person.
I don't know the objective, yeah.
What's that?
It's subjective, so I don't know.
Subjective. Well, I, I, you know, I, we have, I can't say where, where former mayor Eric Johnson lived, but he pops into my mind as one of the giants in Dallas. Specifically to District 13. I'm just going to have to go with Eric Johnson. I, I don't know what, you know.
All right, Ms. Donnell Willis, same question.
Yeah, I don't know if I'll say most famous ever, but I'll say pretty famous right now is Luca. And I'm hearing that Luca is becoming a very popular baby name in Dallas, Texas. So I think he's it right now.
All right, last lightning round question. Name one individual endorsement that you are particularly proud of in the district from somebody who lives in District 13. Ms. Donnell Willis, you'll go first.
You know, I'm really proud of the endorsement of my friend, DISD trustee Dustin Marshall. He is someone I, I've, I've known even before we were in Leadership Dallas together, as someone who lived in my neighborhood and who has always been about education. That's just what I would lead with about him and just is such a dedicated public servant. And I'm just really proud to have his support. And then he was so supportive early on.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, same question for you.
I would have to say, former council member Ann Margolin, who led our district with such distinction and devotion. She, she was just so important to our district and our city. It would have to be Ann Margolin.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Burke. I'm going to give each, I know we're a little bit over time, but I want to give each of you one minute to close out. Mr. Burke, you'll go first and then Ms. Donnell Willis.
Well, I want to thank you again to the North Dallas Chamber and all of the hosts of today's forum and everyone else who took the time to join in. As the council member from District 13, I'll be working to promote smart growth, protecting taxpayers and improving our basic services like roads, parks, libraries and police and fire protection and bringing more affordable housing to our city. I fully support our police and I'll be working every day to ensure they have the resources they need to reduce crime. Because I know that economic growth and opportunity in our city begins and ends with public safety. Just as important, I will be the only member of the council bringing 35 years of business and finance background to this horseshoe. District 13 has a legacy of providing strong, business-minded leaders to City Hall. That experience is invaluable and has made our city better. I hope you'll support me in continuing the tradition of sending these business-minded servant leaders to Dallas City Hall. And I, I want to thank everyone for attending today.
Thank you very much. Ms. Donnell Willis, one minute to close out.
Sure. Well, I hope that in telling you that I'm an experienced, effective leader and that I've demonstrated consensus building, you, you've gotten that through what I've shared with you today. I lead a small business now. I have P and L responsibility and create budgets and bring people together all the time. I have a, a deep roster of community service, not just in the boardroom, but in the trenches, working with, with people. I have served three times as Jennifer Gates' appointee on boards and commissions. And I believe in neighborhoods first at City Hall so that you can be heard. But I want you to vote for me in addition to my record in business and in the community, because I can represent you on every vote. My opponent has some serious conflicts. He's a property owner and we need developers in Dallas, Texas. But we don't need someone sitting in this seat who can't represent you on every vote, who might have to exclude, excuse themselves time after time when big decisions are there to be made. And that's not me. I would be there for you, being able to be your voice, making sure you're not voiceless, but in fact are heard in a, in a strong manner. And that's something you would get with me. So I think that's why I deserve your vote. I hope you'll go out May 24th. If you can't make it to early voting, then please vote on June 5th.
Thank you very much. And if the candidates would like to leave contact information or websites, please do so in the chat so people can reach out to you with any follow-up questions. I'm sorry that we were not able to get to all of the audience questions today. We had quite a few and I had about seven or eight more questions that I would have asked if we had time. But thank you both, to both of these outstanding candidates for an excellent forum, talking about the issues. We really appreciate you taking the time to participate today. Thanks again to all of our sponsors, of course, the North Dallas Chamber, Dallas Breakfast Group, the League of Women Voters, the Friends of the Dallas Public Library, Faith Commons and Preston Hollow People. If you would like to, we have another candidate forum coming up on Friday at noon for City Council District 11, which is where I reside. And then also on Wednesday, May 26th for City Council District 2. You can sign up for all of those forums on our website, ndcc.org. And look forward to seeing you all there. So thanks again to our candidates, to our sponsors. And please, please go out and vote on May 24th or afterwards. We look forward to seeing you all at the polls. Take a picture of yourself voting and send it to me and we will promote it for you. So thanks again to our candidates and our sponsors and we are adjourned.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all. Thanks for everybody for being here. I may promote some of our co-sponsors if anybody would like to stick around for a minute. I'm promoting Ken Malcolmson. If Ken's still here. Ken? You there?
Yeah, sure am. Fantastic. Thank you for moderating. You did a masterful job as always.
Thank you.
The lightning rounds were really interesting today and they were all fresh and new and different.
I wanted to switch it up a little bit.
Yeah, that was great.
It was fun to ask those questions.
Well, good, good. Anybody else still on?
I see Diane here. Oh, you know what? Look, there's Dustin Marshall. Let's, let's, let's promote him. If he, if he wants to talk to us, he can let us know what's going on with DISD.
All we got, all we have is his mug shot.
No, he may not be there anymore.
Yeah.
I'll promote Diane. I think everyone's dropping off.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's fine. Hey Diane, are you there?
I am. I didn't realize you promoted me.
I, I just thought it'd be fun, but I think, I think for the most part, people are dropping off. So thank you for your continued support.
So that you did an awesome job again. Thank you. Thank you. And I'm, I'm delighted that people are engaged in the runoff. The, the runoff is so important. Every vote counts maxed out because of the amount of participation we typically get. So your vote makes a difference for sure.
It definitely does, especially in these runoff forums where people generally do not vote. So it's so important that everybody get out and vote and get educated and pay attention to what goes on in these forums and the questionnaires that groups like the League of Women Voters and Bike DFW and Friends of Dallas Public Library and other groups are doing to inform the citizens. So take advantage of those. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close it up, Ken and Diane.
Great. Well, and I'll see, and Jeff, I'll see you in a little bit.
I'll see you for lunch in a few minutes.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, everybody.